Alright, welcome everybody to the July 19th Board Selectmen's Board Committee Meeting. Everyone present is up just to...
Oh, wait till that gets recorded.
Okay, alright, follow the clouding. Anybody have one, say it. Few minutes? Not here and now, okay. Group of meeting minutes, June 24th, 2017, verbal session. Second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
June 24th, 2017, executive session.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
June 12th, 2017, verbal session. July 1st, 2017, verbal session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, review of the, uh, warrant.
Review and order, uh, order of two warrants for the period recovery. June 22nd, 2017 through July 19th, 2017. Payable warrants for the town. FY 2017, uh, fifty-two, number fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four. FY 2018, number one, two, and three. Payroll warrants, FY 2017, number twenty-six and twenty-seven. And FY 2018, number one. Super enterprise warrants, FY 2017, SC twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one. And FY 2018, SC one and two. School warrants, FY 2017, S twenty and twenty-one. And municipal light plants warrant, FY seventeen, number twenty-six, and FY eighteen, number one and two.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, please Chief, Dennis Smith will introduce Newt Coleman James Conway to the board of the town.
So as is customary, I thought I should go through the process that the town goes through as part of their policy to hire a new police officer. James Conway is, was hired to replace Officer David Richardson who worked for thirty-two years for the Westboyles Police Department. So he will be filling that vacancy.
Link his shoes?
Not his shoes, just the vacancy. But what I want to do, just real quickly, is go through so that if people don't know the process that we use, you know, it's not just going out and hiring someone, it's quite a long process. Like I said, we had a vacancy, so I posted the open position within the town offices for a couple of weeks. We advertised the position in various different medias, newspaper, internet, Facebook, all those. Then we have a process where we accept resumes for so many weeks, you know, given everybody's deadline. We screen the applicants for those who possess the state minimum requirements that the town sets with these departments. Then we go through and we send letters out to people who don't meet those requirements, thanking them for applying, basically saying that they're not going to be going to the next phase. We made it through all of so far. Then we go on with the process, we send letters out for the next phase, which is interviews. I did something a little different this time, you know, like going through the process a number of times. We actually invited the fire chief to sit on the board, which was interesting. He had, you know, a different perspective from the fire department, worked very closely with the fire department. So he sat with our board and I didn't give him the questions, he came up with his own. What I found interesting is his question was, "Why do police make the well and look for crime? Environment just stay in station and wait for someone called as a fire..." Just let them zone, but, you know, it's a party. So after, after that process, the applicant fills out an application, you know, we, now we're down, they fill out a full application for the town. We have a huge background check, we go through everything. We go through current employee listings, their employers, past employers, where they live. We visit the house unannounced, we do medical once, once they get through that process. We do bank records, make sure they're not, you know, in debt too far, and, you know, really go through a huge process. After that, they go through a pre-employment physical, right now we use Reliant Health Group. And then after that, they do, this is the tricky part, they do a pre-employment psychological test. We're still waiting, but, but, no, obviously James passed, passed all those. And the thing that is very nice to bring James aboard, James Conway, is that he was originally from the town, he currently lives in Worcester. He has a huge background with our police department. When he was in high school, he did an internship with us, decided that he wanted to be a police officer. Then in college, to get his bachelor's degree in criminal justice, he did a, over a six-hundred-hour internship with us. So he's, he spent a lot of time with the Westboyles Police Department. Then I sponsored him to the police academy, he graduated already in the police academy. Two thousand thirteen, yeah, two thousand thirteen. It was an open position in Boylston, so he was a Boylston police officer for the last four, four and a half years. And then we had the open with Officer Richardson retiring, and he applied and made it to this apartment, is now a Westboyles officer. So his name is James Conway, I thought it would be nice if you could introduce his, his wife and, I think it's a little girl.
Like Chief Mick said, this is my beautiful wife, born and raised in town, just like me, parents still live over on Western Ave. She's actually a fifth grade sax teacher in town. This is my four-month-old daughter, I think, yeah. So, we're just trying to give back to town, we grew up in, I grew up in town also, for all the years I've done here, families from town, broadies, the Conways. The majority of them still live in town, so I'm excited, I'm eager to get out and meet some of the people I don't know in town, I'm eager to help the people I do know. And I'm ready to deal with, you know, the things that we have to deal with as police department. So I'm extremely excited and, you know, I want to thank Chief Minnick and thank all of you for the opportunity to be a police officer here. Just give my years of experience from Boylston, bring more here, continue to be a police officer.
I did feel one important step, the interview with me last, and then the town administrator gave her, was very important. I think she did it.
And he comes to us with fantastic references from Boylston.
I'm sure they hate to see you go.
Yes, they, they understand.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming, I'm really looking forward to working in the town.
Thank you, thank you.
We're gonna give you a news station because you came along here.
That wasn't for me! Alright, fantastic, all hell a-guy's to thank me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations.
I'm on task today. My wife did two thousand and eight, two thousand and seven. Yes, it's nice to be back, it's awesome. Yes, thank you. Very nice meeting you, nice meeting you, sir.
Thank you Chief for coming back today.
I got it, thank you, it was very nice seeing you.
Oh, sure, would you mind doing a follow-up?
Do you have that for us?
You can do that.
Thank you. Come together?
Yes.
Seal, that's all it's about.
Seal of the town, yeah, it's always. That's hot.
How about Dennis?
Yeah, she should be.
Oh, we're gonna do the fire swat, you can curve a little bit? That's better. We almost did the fire swat, so. Alright, one more time.
There we go.
Thank you, have a great one, thank you.
Alright, new business, instead of approving schedule for October 16th, 2017, seven annual town meeting.
John, we missed one.
They have seven thirty?
Are they hearing you?
Yeah. Michelle?
Are they here?
Oh. Are you expecting anyone else, the next Michelle or?
I was.
Well, we can wait that.
We can wait, please.
Well, I don't, I haven't, I don't, I don't know, they said they might, so I don't want to hold everybody up.
Why don't we, I thought we would do business, we'll come back to you in a few minutes.
Okay, great.
Alright, so, uh, schedule for the October 16th, 2017, semi-annual town meeting.
So Nancy had put together the new schedule to, it's all the different action items for getting ready for the October town meeting. October, town meeting is set for October 16th at seven o'clock. So the, the action items and the deadlines would be as follows. September first would be the deadline for somebody in the minority articles, that would need consideration. September seventh would be the deadline for any other proposed articles. September twenty-second would be when all the town meeting warrant articles are presented to the Board of Selectmen. September twenty-fifth, I would forward the draft town meeting warrant to the Finance Committee and other pertinent boards. September twenty-seventh would be the final review of the warrant. And September twenty-ninth would be posting of the warrant, October fifth would be the public distribution. And as I said, October 16th is the actual fall town meeting.
Uh, do you need a motion to consider?
You could vote to accept.
So moved? Wait.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We want with the open space thing, there's some server for the next one. Consider voting for a signed letter of support for the updated open space and recreational plan prepared by the Open Space Implementation Committee. This is something I know I work on, there would be, we had a central mass planning group. They did quite a, quite a report, so I don't think we had a chance to look at it.
Signed letter, what's the?
There's a letter that Nancy's put together for John to sign if the board's in agreement. The letter just says that the, you know, that the Open Space Implementation Committee did a commendable job, and that the board supports the, um, the efforts in the plan.
So moved? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, considers establishing a policy to, sales, mail, tax paid on the warrants.
Okay, Pat had actually asked that this be put forward to the board. As you know, as part of the update that we're doing to financial policies and procedures, one of them was this issue of establishing a clear policy on when we would reimburse sales tax. Raj will remember that there have been times in approval of the warrants that you've actually paid out reimbursement on sales tax to some employees or town officials, simply because they did not have the ability to prove to the vendor at the time, for whatever reason, that they were purchasing on behalf of the town of Westboyles and who's nonprofit. So we, our town accountant put together this draft policy, which identifies the intent that the town, you know, is working to try to not pay sales tax, but delineates those certain circumstances under which we would be willing to approve reimbursement to officials or employees for sales tax. It establishes a requirement that you establish agreements with vendors in advance when at all possible, so that there can be a tax exemption certificate on file, so that when a purchase is made, they will not apply a sales tax to the purchase. It recognizes that there are times when it would place a financial burden on individuals who are acting on the town's behalf by adopting a zero sales tax reimbursement. So she's establishing under item three, that in the rare event that it's impractical or impossible to avoid having to pay sales tax, that the individuals would be reimbursed in an amount not to exceed twenty-five dollars in tax per transaction. And it also sets a limit that if there were repeat occurrences of requesting tax reimbursement, that there would be denial of tax reimbursement in the future. So what it's trying to do is to, you know, clearly state that there's an expectation that the, any individual who's purchasing an item on behalf of the town of Westboyles and would work to avoid having to pay sales tax, but in those rare instances where it is unavoidable, that it would be a maximum of twenty-five dollars of tax that would be reimbursed to that individual. And Pat felt that this is something that should go before the board.
So we have to do, follow here?
This, this is a, a new financial policies and procedures that we're going to be bringing to you in its entirety. If you approve this tonight though, it will be moving forward, it will provide guidance to the town accountant's office in the meantime. This is what she's acting on, but it will be part of the full policies and procedures that we'll be bringing forward to you.
Couple things, has Pat looked at it since?
He has, yes.
He's, he's thought, he found this was okay?
He, he, he was, I think he was concerned about the twenty-five dollar per, of tax per transaction. Twenty-five dollars would equate to four hundred dollars of goods, which is a larger purchase, whether it's, you know, equipment or whatever. He was wondering whether the board felt comfortable with that, or perhaps a smaller amount.
And then my other question, I mean, how much, do we know how much we're talking here?
It's rare, I mean, it's, it's less than a thousand dollars annually that we deal with on this. But it had been raised by Pat and by Raj upon reviewing of payable warrants. So it felt, you know, it would be appropriate to put this into our financial policies and procedures.
When do you see an emergency that someone has to run off and buy something, pay some steps?
I wouldn't say it's an emergency situation, it's more just a time-sensitive situation. Those instances that deal with unions, with, we have a setup where the union employees in the middle of a snowstorm are allowed to purchase a meal during the snowstorm. And, you know, they are allowed to be reimbursed for that. So if the, you know, they obviously may not have the ability to stop and, you know, choose where they're going to get their meal or what have you. So this policy would not apply to them, because there, that would be difficult for them to comply with making sure that there was tax exemption certificates and such. So I think that's probably the, the only situation where it's totally unavoidable.
So if they start moving to snowstorm, they had to attack and pick up some salt or something like that, and pay the sales tax on it?
Right.
Be reimbursed?
They would, they would be reimbursed for that, if, as long as it's, you know, a one-time thing. That they haven't done it before, they haven't abused the privilege, they would be allowed to be reimbursed up to the twenty-five dollars of tax. Typically, it's far less an amount than that, I mean, the tax that we typically see on the warrants for reimbursements are in the three to five dollar range.
It's mostly coming from the school department.
For what?
They go to Dallas store, the Walmart, probably, the very smaller areas. So that's the time when they get the tax, like, fifty cents, dollar.
Well, when they put it received, they don't get reimbursed for what we see?
No, they have the tax, and they have to run up the tax, and the accounting pays without tax. But, hey, they don't, the town doesn't pay. They don't pay the tax.
This is where we're, you know, we're trying to establish, you know, a clear policy in which we allow individuals. In the past, the accounting office had a practice that if it was a first time individual came in and they didn't understand the policy, they would be reimbursed, because they, you know, they were acting in good faith on the town's behalf, the accounting office would pay that. The state law does not prohibit us from reimbursing people for taxes that they paid, but it's a best practice not to. So what the, what the accounting office is trying to do is to establish clear guidelines, under which they will, under which situations they will be able to, willing to reimburse people for taxes paid.
Do you think we could have a contract with the WB Mason Office Max?
We do.
So then why they are not finding through them?
There are times when you might need a supply, and you need it for the meeting that night. You don't have time to order through WB Mason or what have you. So, you know, that's when you run out to the nearest supply, purchase it. I mean, I have myself at times run out and purchased something on the town's behalf, whether it was making copies for a meeting that needed to be, you know, something needed to be prepared, what have you. So those are the times when you, when you're running into town employees or town officials purchasing something on the town's behalf, and then afterwards seeking reimbursement.
I would, I would say that that, that, that point should be ten, you know, a hundred dollars would be six dollars and forty-five cents, right? Six point.
Six point two five percent.
I would say ten, I mean, if someone is in that situation and running out and spending a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars, I don't think that's right, I think it should be.
I mean, four hundred dollars could be a large piece of equipment, which you would think would not be something that could be.
I agree with Pat, maybe, maybe ten dollars?
Ten dollars?
Ten dollars, because all the meals would be set, almost. That's what I would suggest. If that's, you think that would be alright?
I think, I think that's legitimate.
That would be over a hundred dollars.
Right, I think, you know, at the four hundred dollar limit, I think she was looking at some of the purchases made with meals for the school. But in those instances, if they're pre-planned, they should be able to work in advance with the vendor, so the taxes don't need to be paid.
Even some of these places in town that they might go to, can we put our tax ID number there?
Some smaller businesses don't do that.
Alright, but any of the, the ones, right. So are we voting tonight to just move this forward, and we're not doing any voting?
I, I don't think it's necessary to vote tonight, because this will be coming back to you more formally, but we're looking for the feedback on this. So I'm hearing agreement that reduce it to a maximum of ten dollars?
We thought it would be between ten and fifteen, but I'm fine with ten.
Six point eighteen, maybe, that'd be, six point eighteen, that'd be close to three hundred dollars, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with ten.
Ten?
And it's gonna come back to us anyway, so it's, that's right.
Okay, very, thank you.
Recognize acceptance of the following donations for the Vance Committee and through approved expenditures of these funds in general purposes. Twenty fifty dollars from Cultural Council, two fifty from SNS found in Delhi, two fifty from Binders Incorporated. Fifty one dollars in free will donations from June 18th concert. Hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents in free will donations from June 25th concert. Hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-one cents in free will donations from July 2nd concert. And a hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents in free will donations from July 9th concert.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recognize acceptance of one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-three cents in donations from the library, from Amosville Wasp, the dam and forks and other materials, donations for the use of printers and copiers, and finishes given to support the general needs of the library and expenditures of the funds.
So moved? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board Goal Setting Workshop, have reviewed the suggestions received.
Right, so Nancy has taken the different suggestions that we've received for both the Selectmen and for the Town Administrator, and put them into the spreadsheet which she's done for past years. So what we're asking the board to do is that if you have any individual goals that you'd like to suggest be added, if you could please get those to Nancy by Wednesday, what, I think was the date that we chose, next Wednesday? Next Wednesday, so that she can enter it into the spreadsheet. This really, it helps us in terms of review of these different options for goals at the workshop itself that Saturday. So if we could, you know, if you have things that people have brought forward to you that you'd like to have be considered, or if there are goals that you yourself have thought of, please let Nancy know so she can add it to the spreadsheet.
Then we'll rank them after we.
So they, we'll have discussion at the workshop itself, we'll rank them at the workshop. If you, if you come to the workshop yourself with the goals pre-ranked, that would really help the process and expedite making decisions.
Consider approving the refinancing of affordable unit in Angelbrook Drive.
Yes, we have residents at Angelbrook Drive that had purchased an affordable unit, and they're looking to refinance. We received a copy of the application that's going to DHCD, does need to be approved by the state. The consultant that is used by the Affordable Housing Trust has reviewed this and said that it's legitimate, it's appropriate, but it does need approval by the Selectmen, so I would recommend that the board vote to approve this.
So moved? Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I do. What is the purpose of refinancing that?
They're just looking to get a lower interest rate.
Okay. So they're not selling their, staying, okay, thank you.
All in favor? I want to come back to the talk.
Sure. Does it look like? I'm hoping to get in, you know, with some of the language, because I don't entirely understand the alphabet, but I will try.
Alright, this is for the Open Space Implementation Committee, dog park, sub-group is dog park discussion.
Um, so my name is Michelle Brown. I first presented to the board in January of this year regarding reaching out to the Stanton Foundation for a grant to put a dog park in town. And the Stanton Foundation required a town, I'm sorry, a town hall employee or a town employee to contact, it couldn't just be any town member that contacted the foundation. So I needed to graciously contact them with the questions that the board had last time. And then I provided an update on June 1st, and so I believe you all have my handout for today? Yeah?
You have colored copies in front of you.
Yeah. So basically, the initial land that we had requested to contact the Stanton Foundation with the application, which would require a draft sketch of the land, in addition to a budget breakdown and a letter from the board. The land was, we thought, open, and now not. And so that we looked across the street, so I was gonna drive, we went across the street, and that was also not available. So we're now looking at the parcel C on Timden Drive.
Right, it's a piece, parcel of town-owned land that's closest to the Boylston town line. It's the parcel that is under the care, custody, and control of municipal light plant. That's one of the parcels, the town-owned parcels that's being looked at.
Because the original one, the light plant, want, want to be.
Right, the lower parcel, they, they had, they have immediate plans of using the section that had previously been considered for a dark, dog park location. So now the, the Subcommittee is looking at this parcel that's further up the street, near the Boylston town line. I did have some conversation with John Fitch, manager at the light plant, about that. He did say that, you know, that deed does have a restriction, that the land does need to be used for municipal light plant purposes or operations. But there is, because the, the percentage of the land that would need to be used for the dog park, there is a possibility that, you know, the, if the municipal light plant board agreed, that they could assign to be a host of a dog park there on one small portion of the parcel that's near the Boylston town line. So that's one potential location. If that's something that the board feels is appropriate to seriously consider, I would ask you to authorize the chair to sign a letter that I'll draft, that would go to the light board, asking them to consider a portion, using a portion of that parcel for use for the dog park. There are some other sites though, perhaps, Michelle, you could walk through the other sites that you've been looking at?
If I could, just in the guides to that site, is it flat, that section, or is it?
It's, it's, it's more flat than the middle section that the Selectmen have the care of. It's wooded though, so it would require some tree removal.
How much land do we, do you feel that we need?
An acre, an acre and a half to two acres.
And I believe that the parcel, their parcel C, I believe is roughly thirteen or fifteen acres.
And what is the threshold on that?
It has to, it, this, this, when, it was acquired by the state, the state with the restriction that it's for municipal light plant operations. So, but, you know, as long as the majority of the property is used for that purpose, it's likely that by having a small acre on a corner of the land, that that would not deter from the use of the property. John did say that while they're not currently actively using it for municipal light plant purposes, that he is looking to use it for storage and perhaps other uses in the future.
When they go for the grant, do they look for the property?
Yes, they, they want to make sure that it's property, that there is a, you know, a viable agreement, that it's town-owned. So you have to show that there is.
But, oh, this is not a town-owned, right? This is under the custody of Light. But this is not a town-owned, right? This is under the custody of a light plant.
They would accept that as being an entity of the town.
So even with the deed restriction?
Mm-hmm.
So the other sites that we're potentially looking at are, the third bulleted section, I'm sorry, bolded section on the document, two fifty-five Laurel Street. And Vinnie graciously wrote out the different conditions and who owns the land and that sort of information. Two thirty-three Goodell Street, Nineteen Crescent, and I believe forty-nine Tibnan is what we were just talking about.
So of this list, the only other parcel that's owned by the town is the two fifty-five Laurel Street, which was the town brush dump area. You know, the negatives of that is that it, you know, there is poor traffic circulation in that area. But it is isolated, it's open, and there is water in the street, which is one of the requirements of the grant that we would be putting access to water in the dog park. So that's, they were looking for areas that had water in the vicinity. The other, the DCR parcel, obviously that would require state approval and not likely to be achieved. And the Nineteen Crescent Street is privately owned. So of the four that they've been looking at, it's really the first and the fourth that might be potential locations.
Two fifty-five Laurel Street. That's the firing edge. It's not clear that, so...
What they're talking about is the town, the portion of land they're owning by the brush dump.
The sound and the... Is it a good location for a dog park? That's...
And which, we haven't received any complaints about noise in that area.
Not now. We don't know what will happen at the court.
See, I agree that Tibnan Drive is the best, yeah, the best possibility.
Because Crescent Street, you have, Crescent's owned?
Yeah, it's probably owned.
On Tibnan Drive, if you're going up from our side, it's on the...
It would be on the left-hand side, near the, just before the curb?
Yeah. But you're saying that has to be cleared out.
The section to be used for the dog park would be, is wooded, so it would require some clearing.
The section that cleared is under the power lines as well, so it was another reason why the West Boylston Municipal Light Plant, while they were using it anyway, but with the power lines.
That was the original section that they had come to for.
And for that area, we need to put a road in, or is there, or have we gotten that far yet? How far in are we?
I think it would, it would require some in-depth conversation with the municipal light plant board in terms of which section of that parcel they would be willing to allow use, designate for dog park use. So I think it's too premature to determine what that might add in terms of construction costs.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
So the management service, the overall engineering, phase one of the...
It does, yes. And we have raised over fifty percent of the cost that we would need to get the draft sketch to be able to apply.
How much is the cost for that?
Twelve hundred dollars.
So within your committee, do you have a number one out of these locations that you're looking to go forward with?
I think probably the Tibnan Drive would be the preferred location.
Okay.
So if you're looking to vote on the board...
I would ask the board to authorize the chair to send a letter to the municipal light plant, asking them to consider hosting the dog park, allowing this dog park to be established on that person.
Still moved? Second.
Any other discussion?
I do have another question. On Laurel Street versus Tibnan Drive, where it says poor traffic circulation, do we know what that really means? Are we saying the amount of traffic? Because to me, that would be less cost and we wouldn't have to go to the lighting plant if that was chosen.
I don't know. Like I said, Vinnie graciously put this together, so I'm not entirely sure.
I think, yeah, I think what he's referring to is access onto the site because it's currently, you know, it's meant, basically, we're just using it for, you know, the brush dump. So if it's going to be used for public access, depending on which section would be used for it, we would have to establish a road that could be safe access for people going in and out.
Which is basically what we may have to be doing on Tibnan as well.
Hopefully, we can just do a driveway into the park. Instead of going deep in, I don't know.
That would be preferred.
Right. If it's closer to this road.
Mm-hmm.
You're right, but Laurel is way back. It's, it's not a road. It's a dirt path.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. I can't wait to hear it by you, Michelle.
Me too.
Should I stay in?
Um, I'll, no, you can, I'll get in touch with you tomorrow. We'll talk about next steps.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right. I'm going to trade with you, board.
Thank you. So wanted to give the board an update on where we stand with helping the cemetery board on acquisition of additional land for cemetery expansion. We, in the packet, you have a memo that we received from the cemetery board. They're stating that they have only four hundred and eighty-four grave spaces left in the Mount Vernon Cemetery, which they just let us know this evening that the rate they're currently selling the spaces, that really only gives them about three years' worth of spaces left at the cemetery. We did pursue the potential land acquisition with DCR. The state has determined that if we do want to purchase a piece of land from DCR, that we do have the option to do an outright payment for the land rather than a land swap. Because when we looked at available town-owned parcels, the only parcel that DCR was interested in acquiring was the rail trail section, which the town is not willing to consider swapping to DCR. So there is the potential that we can just do an outright purchase. Obviously, that would require the standard state legislative approval. We would have to go through appraisals of the property using a firm of the state's choosing. All of that would have to be done at the town's expense. So knowing that, you know, that was something that could be lengthy, could be expensive, this afternoon, Mr. Ruch and Mr. Hadley and I met with members of the cemetery board to talk again about the potential of the purchase of private land in town. When we did the RFP late last year, early this year, we received two proposals that were extremely highly priced. So we were talking about options of looking for ways to perhaps narrow down the amount of space, maybe some creative discussions with the landowners in terms of how much space we acquire at one time, what have you. So just to update the board, we're still in process of having discussions with the cemetery board on this. We, as an outcome of this afternoon's meeting, we are looking at several different parcels again to get more information and will be bringing more information back to the board of selectmen. There is no decision made at this time as to which the appropriate route is to take. On our local aid cherry sheet, we do have final numbers now. The state did vote to approve the budget and we are in good shape in terms of the revenue estimates that we use for local aid for our FY eighteen budget. The final numbers for the local aid that we receive, we had used the governor's numbers because they were the most conservative. The final numbers for revenues coming in in local aid are actually forty-seven thousand dollars less than we had anticipated that they would be. But that's being offset by the fact that the charges, that the state charges against us each year are about thirty-nine thousand dollars less than what we thought it would be. So they balance themselves out. So all in all, we're really only short by two thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars for the state revenue estimates that we had put in for the budget. And because we are so conservative in terms of the local receipt numbers that we use in our revenue projections, we will be fine. We won't have any issue with that. So it's a relief to have the final numbers now and know that there is no significant impact on what the state finally did approve. Just to let you know that we did submit the prioritization plan for the Complete Streets project. We worked with CMRPC to develop that. It was close collaboration with the Transportation Committee. So that has been submitted. I still have not heard back yet from the state. I'm hoping that we'll hear in a few weeks to determine whether or not they've approved our prioritization plan. And as soon as we have approval on that, the Transportation Committee will be talking next steps about looking to apply for funding to the Tier Three section of the Complete Streets program. Several meetings ago, we had talked about the building department fees. And I did have discussion with the electrical inspector and it is apparent that we do need to do a review of the fees for the building department. The last time those were looked at was in two thousand nine. So I suggest that we establish a review of the building department fees this year. We'll survey the area communities to find out what they're charging and we'll bring back the survey results to the board with some recommendations as to any changes in fees that we could do. I anticipate we'd probably be able to bring that back to the board sometime in early fall for your consideration. One other thing, at a recent staff meeting, we had discussed the concept of having the staff do an exercise of testing our town buildings for ease of access for our town residents. The staff became rather excited in the concept of bringing in wheelchairs and walkers and actually having staff go through the building using these devices to try to get an understanding of are our buildings as accessible as we think they are? This will help us identify any problem areas that we can work to make changes, whether it's, you know, signage that could be moved to make it more readable for someone in a wheelchair, whether there's, you know, furniture placed in certain locations that might make it difficult with someone with a walker, those types of things. If it's, you know, things that we can easily change, we will, you know, go about making those changes right away. If on some of our buildings, we notice that there's structural issues that need to be addressed, we'll identify that list and we will hopefully work with our new facilities manager that we'll have starting next year, my wish, to make sure that those become capital projects that we can work on.
And then just to, just to add a moment, how about push-button doors for this building?
We'll be testing all of that.
And have we ever looked into cost of those?
We have not looked into the cost of it, but as part of what we'll be doing is looking in, you know, the ADA law requires that doors have a certain ease of pull. So we'll be looking at all of that and determining whether, you know, the addition of push buttons might make things easier. We'll be doing the whole review.
Just as my agency just looked at doing that in one of my locations, forty thousand dollars for one set. Those walk-in...
Yeah, I would imagine. Go ahead. To what I would say, probably, yeah.
Yeah, just doesn't matter.
Yeah. I think, I think, yeah, I can look at it.
And then the last, I just wanted to let the board know that I am moving ahead with the new contracts for our landfill testing of the wells. We do the annual testing as we're required to by DEP. And I'm also moving ahead with the contract for the installation of new wells, all of the funding which was approved at town meeting. So that'll be, that's moving ahead. I just wanted to let you know. We're hoping that the new wells will be installed by the fall.
Chris, what they, who invoices KO and Bennett, invoice of five five seven four, four thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars?
Second.
In discussion, all favor.
Aye.
Cardinal invoice of fifteen, seven thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Still moved?
Second.
In discussion, all favor.
Aye.
RAC bill was number seven, eight hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars.
Still moved?
Second.
In discussion, all favor.
Aye.
Chain dollar number five, RAC bill is fifteen thousand three hundred and two dollars.
Still moved? Second.
In discussion, all favor.
Aye.
Cardinal Construction OPM contract review and approval.
So based on the recommendation of FISB, John Hadley and I have been working on the contract with Cardinal Construction for the first phase of OPM services. That value that was approved or recommended at the FISB meeting is for both the designer selection phase, which we recently completed, and for the pre-construction phase. And that's for a combined total of sixty-eight thousand one hundred dollars.
Just to clarify, so that we're talking for the senior center?
This is for, yes, thank you.
How much was the total again?
It's sixty-eight thousand one hundred for these two parts of the contract. We also negotiated a fee for the construction phase, but that's not going to be part of the contract at this point. If indeed town meeting does approve the construction funds for the senior center, then we'll make an amendment to this contract to add in those pre-negotiated OPM fees for the construction phase.
So this is, this is through... So basically, up to the next...
Up to the next company?
Yeah.
So I'd need the board to vote to approve that contract and authorize the chair to sign.
Still moved?
Second.
Any other discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Architect contract award, review of FISB recommendations and order on contract award.
Want me to talk through the process? So in the selection of an architect for the senior center, we are required to go through what we call a request for qualifications process. We advertise the need for an architect. We receive proposals. We have a selection committee, which was comprised of FISB committee members, who reviewed, shortlisted the five proposals down to a group of three. Those three firms were actually interviewed last night by the FISB committee. Those three firms were Sterling Architects Associates. It was Deeds and Company and it was Peola and Binek Associates of Western Massachusetts. It was a lengthy discussion last night at the FISB meeting in terms of setting a prioritization list for firms to consider for contract award. I think it was fairly easy for the committee to determine that Deeds and Company was the third place, the least preferred vendor. But the two other candidates, Sterling Architects and Kayla and Binek, I'll call them CBA for ease of discussion, were equally rated by the committee. So after a lot of discussion, it was determined and was voted by FISB last night to recommend the contract be awarded to CBA. It's the same architectural firm we're using with the police station. So we have, we know the chief architect will be in charge of it and I think will provide some efficiency in working with the architectural firm. I do have to say, I wasn't part of the vote taken last night, but I was pleased with the vote taken last night. In terms of the contract administration with CBA, I found him to be very good to work with. So tonight, the board would have to actually vote to award the contract to CBA.
I'll make the motion that we vote to accept the contract with CBA.
Second. Any other discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Now, this does require that we now negotiate the fee with them. So would it be the chair and I who would be working to do that with Tony DeLuzio?
It's up to you. Yeah, I can do it.
Okay. So Chris?
Yeah.
Tony and I? Okay. Very good. Thank you.
I think all the, the groups all yesterday, last night, were, I think they were positive on the cost and they think we can do some work on the cost of the project. I think that was, that came out from all three companies.
All three companies did say that we can, well, you know, we have estimated that the project, the total project cost would be six point five million dollars. All three firms interviewed last night said that they feel comfortable they could achieve a savings of at least five hundred thousand dollars on that price.
Move in that direction. And that's not, that's not taking away the quality.
Right.
It's just, they feel what's out there. So I think that's possible to try to work with that.
General update on the police station. The drywall's one, the ceiling's going in. Real come along, well, still in budget, still on time, so we're still looking sometime, so it's not what we think.
So it's going to be done.
And we took quite a bit of room out of there to save it for DPW, so it's good. All right. Forming some reservations. Currently, the appointment of Dennis Fitzpatrick for the board assesses effective July twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, for term to expire on April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Still moved? Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Currently, according to Michelle Fowler on board of health, effective July twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, for term to expire on April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Still moved?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Currently, the following take board documents. Comments on the following board appointments? Sports representative Jason Tamin?
Tamin.
Sports representative James Jeff Legenda, senior representative Diapemia, Atla, Jack Flynn, Atla, Michelle Brown, Atla, and for August meeting?
I haven't made a decision on that other position.
Slipping the A's on Christmas trip.
Some more?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Tim Steele has resigned the position as access coordinator for the WPA TV. Comments on reappointment of Beverly Goodell to the Community Preservation Committee as a desity of the Historical Commission effective July 22, 2017, for a term to expire June 30, 2020.
Some more? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments on reappointment of Pat Bryant to the Townwide Planning Committee as a desity of the Finance Committee effective July 22, 2017, for a term to expire on April 30, 2020.
Some more?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments on appointment of Steven Blake, the Community Preservation Committee as a desity of the Parks Commission effective July 22, 2017, for a term to expire on June 30, 2020.
Some more?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments on reappointment of Gary Flynn to the Open Space Evocation Committee as a desity of the Parks Commission effective July 22, 2017, for a term to expire on June 30, 2018.
Some more? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments on the following planning board desities and appointments? Paul Yanceon to the Charity Station Committee. Do you stay anywhere there, Raj?
That's what I'm going to say that. No. For economic development, last planning board meeting, Mark Freedom was the decision.
Okay, but everything else the same?
Yeah, all of it's the same.
So Cheryl Charles to the Townwide Planning Committee?
Yeah.
Miss Fignelli to the Open Space Evocation Committee. So Mark Pugh is going to be to the Economic Development Task Force?
Yes.
And Cheryl Charles to the Earth Removal Board and the Community Preservation Committee?
Some more?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting invitations and announcements, online solar building will be operational on July, building site, which is projected to be mailed on July 24th? Wow, that's great.
Yeah, they're working up the final kinks now. I've been seeing a lot of back and forth between the company and Karen Perry, our IT director, so it's really moving into place.
Should I keep pushing until three?
Five years.
That's great.
It is.
Now, do we know if this is going to be the one that there's a twenty-five cent charge? Do we know if this...
There are various charges, it's not a free service. The, if you do, we can provide more detail at the next meeting, but there are small charges associated with the use of the service.
And July 29, nine PM, nine AM?
Nine PM.
The board reviews fully cross. All right, future tenant items, Slipping the A's.
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Just a update, I was going to reach out to Mr. Hadley in regards to the World Trade Center, the scout that's working on that, we're going to try to meet with him in the next couple of weeks. So I don't think anything will really happen on it till Asavick gets back in. So, but if we can meet, maybe he can present some, we'll present some to the board, I even come to the board, so I'm going to reach out to John and try to set a date for that.
Are we looking to do an interior presentation or an exterior presentation?
I believe he's planning on an interior.
Great.
I think that's what the plan is, so, but we can update board as we get...
The town light department, you know, they did change a lot of lights, streetlights. So, yeah, all of the my ladies, so bright. Looks like nobody complained yet so far. So it's the funding through the state, I guess.
Yes, it was a grant.
And also, it reduces the cost of the streetlight electricity fee to...
It does. And it also focuses the light downward more directly, rather than it being general.
So bright.
Say along the left too, I think they can, they don't have to change it here as much.
The longer lasting.
I did have somebody call and ask, is there an option, they don't like it, they don't like this angle, is there an option that they don't have to have it on their street, it's near their street light?
I would encourage anyone who has concerns about a street light to contact the light department to see what they can do.
That's my total, okay.
Anybody else have anything else? All right?
Motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.